Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. My Pledge of Allegiance is to flag the United States of America into the Republic which stands our nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jan Tavison. Michael Jaden.
Here.
Colin Ellis.
Here.
Olivia Francisco.
Here.
Frank Wong.
Donovan, here.
Okay, next up is public comment, uh, the fourth individual, Gina Third.
Gina Third, Garden Road, Exeter. It will be very brief. I just wanted to follow up on the meeting that you all had on September twenty-second regarding the CEA overlay. And at the end, with the vote, it was left that the major reason for the no vote on that was to work on rewriting it. And I would like to volunteer to help to do that. I think so often we have the start of some really good things that then kind of get shelved and never come back to. And it's important that we come back to it and we fix it and we do it right. And I think we also have so often, we beg for people in town to help and we don't have those volunteers. Well, I'll put my money where my mouth is. I think it's important that we do this for the farms in town and I would like to help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Asaf Davis. Asaf signed up three times here for three individual items and I want that correct.
Thank you. As you say, I've done three topics for tonight, so luckily our agenda asserted a topic instead of speaker. If you're going to change the agenda for future meetings, I'd suggest taking out the because council is obliged not to respond language since per state statute forty-two dash forty-six dash six D. That's not true. So, Sunday's paper, lots of interesting articles. I said we could expect more of these CPA things in our town, state, and country at the meeting. And here we are reading about an even bigger one right next door. There's still a chance for the town to get ahead of this trend and maybe help set the guidelines with our new comprehensive plan instead of playing catch-up. Two sopran stories about both the Afghani Taliban refugees and the Haitian Del Rio refugees coming toward Ireland. And also a story about our lack of housing in general and affordable housing specifically. Exeter doesn't rank well and the situation's getting worse. Maybe it's Exeter's turn to host like Lorik and Prancet did for the Mongs, Cambodians, and Vietnamese after that war. We've got the space, we don't seem to want to use it for solar or modern farms. If we do affordable housing for refugees, maybe we can help the town and the state at the same time. Highlight in the paper is a photo of a rugged young man running a turf cutter. Maybe next time they'll put his name in instead of leaving us all guessing. So, now that the circus is over, I hope to do the right thing regarding CEA and have the planning board fix the solar ordinance so we don't have a constant stream of zoning overlay requests which will follow this one in revenue. When I make a mistake, I own up to it. During the CEA meeting, I said I thought the sharkner product would need about five megawatts total. Turns out I was off by a factor of three. The actual load is more like fifteen megawatts. With the last vote, this means one megawatt of solar plus fourteen megawatts of fossil fuel generation. So, congratulations. The Enbacher should be in high spirits with the fourteen megawatt generator order that they received. To put it in perspective, this entire town's residential electric load is about ten megawatts. This is going to be the biggest expansion of fossil fuel generation in southern Rhode Island for years to come. They could be running seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Fossil fuel generators are usually about twenty to thirty percent efficient, so to generate fourteen megawatts of electricity, they'll be burning about fifty megawatts of fuel at any given time. CHP gensets make use of some of the heat during cold months, but during the summer, most of that heat, most of that fuel just heats the air. The town might not be happy, the North Kingstown may not be happy, the Sharkners may not be happy, but National Day shareholders should be. Since the solars aren't smaller, we at least don't have to worry about finding ways to spend the annual two-hundred-and-forty K from their pilot locker since that will mostly go away. Mike, it's not zoning permits, it's zoning certificates and building permits. A zoning certificate just tells you if a certain use is allowed on a piece of property. Since the Sharkners have found the land decades prior to zoning, that use is grandfathered and committed by right here as zoning ordinance anyway. As far as building permits for greenhouses go, I filed an APRA request on this. At least a half dozen greenhouses have been built in town in the last two to three years alone, and there are a number of older ones around town. In the last ten years, there's only been one building permit in Exeter in 2013 for a greenhouse, eight years ago, none more recent, and that's permanently affixed with concrete anchors which explains the permit. I also filed a request of a letter from the state building commissioner, and while the letter isn't dated, the email it was attached to is. It was sent while he was still in office from his state email address. Odds are low getting that overturned. It's not arrogant if you don't apply for a permit or certificate you don't need, it's common sense. It is arrogant to say you can require something you don't have the authority for. Olivia mentioned a cease and desist at that last meeting. Be careful about this. Get an opinion from Mark DiSisto, the counsel for the interlocal trust who's our insurance counter. Just like with the fee case, I'm pretty sure insurance coverage doesn't apply when you break the law. There are two significant laws that could apply here. First, the Rights of Farm Act, which protects farmers from nuisance actions. And second, Rebound Statute eleven dash forty-two dash one regarding collecting fees greater than those authorized by law. Building permit fees fall in this category. If by state law and regulation, a greenhouse doesn't need a building permits, and the Sharkners seem to be on solid ground here based on the commissioner letter and the town's own precedents, then these actions could be considered a violation of state law, ground for noninsurance coverage, and result in personal exposure. Next, in Rhode Island, zoning certificates and building permits don't seem to mean much. While on the council, Frank DeGiorio tried to get my building permit for the Red Barn Book because he didn't like what I said at council meetings. That was four years after it was built and owned by somebody else. A building permit doesn't mean things are done right anyway. For example, here's a 2018 building permit that Steve Matczek holds for the salt shed. As this shows, building permits are worthless unless you also have the required DEM permits like the Rattling and the Groundwork. If we never got, not for the town, in our war. More on the DEM. Thanks to some questions at town hall about my property and recent work, I had the opportunity to host a state forester last week who commented that the LMPs are properly followed and that temporary lodgrages are doing a good job protecting the drainage. I learned there's a DEM forest fire coordinator who handles bringing in additional assistance if a wildfire gets too big for local resources. I asked about the barriers on a state impeding access to the seven-hundred-acre forest in the event of a fire. They replied in the interest of speed, they would go down the driveway and through the yard of forty-seven Estate Drive, which is owned by Mark Einacelli. Concluding sentence was, hopefully that won't happen as it could damage landscaping. So I guess we can thank the Einacellis for the civic spirit, so to speak, and rest easy on that one. Congratulations on getting another extension to October thirty-first, 2022, to fix Matczek's town garage problems. That's good news because it gives all the council members lots of time to figure out their election stance since the deadline will be a week before our next elections. Years from now, getting a legal counsel involved will look like one more significant step in sorting this out. Dan and Cal already told the DEM in writing we can fix all the problems. Now that we've lawyered up, DEM would like to do the same. Cost, fines, and penalties go up for all the taxpayers. DEM stance gets higher, harder, and they have more lawyers and a bigger legal budget than we do. And more bad news, it turns out that buildings on the town garage site didn't just violate the setback regulations. There's another regulation regarding the placement of salt sheds on groundwater aquifer area which covers the entire lot. Since 2005, no salt sheds have been allowed to be constructed in such areas unless, one, they're weatherproof, two, they have an impervious base, and three, run office control through DMP. We don't meet any of these with our structure. Ours was put up in 2018. DEM enforcement may not have been looking into this earlier, but there is September twenty-eighth response. Mr. Ahern now says, quote, "In addition, we will consider the issue of the salt storage facility on-site and the potential for groundwater contamination as part of our ongoing review of this case," end quote. Given that you're now awarding the bid for more salt and probably storing it in an unauthorized area for the thirty years straight, I might have a partial solution. If the salt shed can't stay on the property, I'll buy it at current fair market value, contingent on you take it down and remove the barriers on Estate Drive so I can transport it and install it on my property. It's bigger than I need, but this will at least partially offset the costs the town will incur in putting up a building that complies with DEM regulations and protects the wetlands and the groundwater. Second thing I was wrong on was the split rock park being part of the affordable housing stock, so thanks to Pat for setting me straight on that. I realize the one from two million in funds, while it comes with strings attached, doesn't have to be repaid by the town, but every single penny of it is still borrowed by the federal government. Based on current trends, it gets paid back later via our kids and grandkids. Mike, this would be a good chance for the council to put its money where its mouth is, so to speak. I looked through the rules of what it can be used for and had some thoughts. It's supposed to be spent on things that help people hurt by the pandemic. That pretty much applies to everyone in town. It's hard to think of anyone who is positively affected. Based on Maria's reports, the town didn't get hurt much financially. Rather than spending the money on building expansions, I think the town people deserve a voice because they will mourn for it. How about giving it to the residents? Per the rules, that should be allowed. Maybe we should have a referendum on this? At the least, there's a provision to use it for low-income and disadvantaged populations, like saying fixing electrical problems that are part of many of us live. It can't be used to fund legal actions, so maybe a different approach is justifying to fix that problem? Thank you.
Okay, last is Anthony Gallow.
I'm gonna send you to go there, mine.
Okay, you're at least picking a talk here anyway. Next is acknowledgements and announcements, and first off, I'm gonna ask for a moment of silence for Roddy Jordan, who passed away on September seventeenth, 2021. Got right here, Patty. People not familiar, Roddy was a firefighter for thirty years with the North Kingston Fire Department until he was retired in 2000. He joined the Exeter Fire Department Number One in nineteen sixty-eight and was the past Fire Chief for fifteen years. He proudly hit the milestone of fifty years served in 2018. Roddy was a member of the Exeter Fire Department Number Two, an honorary member of the Janice Town Fire Department, and honorary member of the Rhode Island Fire Chiefs Association, past president of the Rhode Island Central Fire League, founding member and first president of Exeter Emergency Dispatch Center, and past administrator and chief of the Exeter Rescue Program. We have a moment of silence for Roddy, please. Okay, next, item B. Congratulations to the Friends of the Exeter Animals on a successful Classic Car Show on September eleventh, 2021, and also to the Friends of the Exeter Library on a successful Fall Festival which was held on September twenty-fifth, 2021. Anybody else have any acknowledgements or announcements? Okay, next up is approval of the agenda order. The motion?
Motion to approve this presentation.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's see. Anybody want to remove any reports?
No, Dan, if I could stop him, could we just, after we've done the consent, could we just address the Reynolds Trust, any people, any of my people to know about what that's going to be used for, so we can address that right at the end of consent.
Okay.
And there are a couple of reports, please.
All right, head count.
The number eight, Public Library, and eleven, the Social Services Department, and these are quick. I just have a couple of things I think people need to know. Fourteen and fifteen, Jack, or in this group, just here.
Please. Fourteen and sixteen?
Fifteen, please.
Anybody need to remove any?
I would like to come on here. Number two.
Number two. Two, eight, eleven, fourteen, and sixteen.
No, fifteen.
Fifteen, I'm sorry. On communications, anybody need to remove any communications?
Ten, please.
Cal, you ready?
No, actually, eleven is the one that I suggested we address, so that's already on the agenda as a business.
Yeah.
But it's a business.
What was he, you have?
No, fine.
Frank?
Just number eight.
Excuse me?
Number eight, please.
Number eight. Okay, everybody's been here for all the meeting minutes, so I'm with it, correct.
We don't, yeah, I don't think we have them. Just Pat. Yeah, I don't think we got them.
Okay.
Just that, Pat.
Pat?
What was that?
We don't have minutes this morning.
No, you don't.
We don't have any of them, so.
No, you don't have any.
Okay. All in favor of the consent agenda as amended?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, let's see, next up, vacancies.
I'm sorry, Dan, could you just go?
All right, go back and call discussion.
Just to the, yeah, that's all right, just quickly. I just wanted to make note that the council was asked to approve a five-thousand-dollar request, and it's from the YMCA of Pluckettuck, Westwood, the Westwood, Pluckettuck YMCA. It's an established entity with positive reputation. This is a report from the Reynolds Trust to us. It currently serves forty Exeter children with a variety of recreational, educational, and enrichment activities. The request relates to renovation funding. The committee recommends, and this again is the Reynolds Charitable Trust manages the trust that assists people in need. The committee recommends the approval of a request of five thousand dollars, and that's intended to help the YWCA make renovations to their building, I just know what I'm reading, which assists, they say, about forty children from Exeter. So it's a good program and it helps people, young people, a place to be, as I read it. So I just want you to know that's part of this consent agenda, which we would narrowly don't address, but this was quite a significant thing.
All right.
Do you want to talk? Can we discuss this now or is that inappropriate? What did you say?
We did.
Can we talk about it?
Sure.
So, this five thousand dollars, have we done this in the past? Have they made any requests in the past for this?
I don't believe they have.
Do we have money in the budget?
Yeah, it's, it's the Reynolds Trust. It's over a million, it's over a million dollars of trust.
It's separate from the discounter load of the operating function.
Do we need to take any action to accommodate this?
No, we usually do it as part of the consent agenda. Since I removed it, I would then suggest that I move that we approve the voucher.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
What did they start out with money in that fund over, what, twenty years ago?
Yeah, I don't remember. It was like thirty thousand dollars. It wasn't big money back then.
It's like one point two million, one point three million now and then?
I mean, it sat there for years until we brought, through litigation.
Until we fixed it.
And this is part of the process, Mike, this. What the Attorney General and the town agreed to was a process whereby this money, which is charitable, they're calling the agents of the state as well as the town, would be administered just like this, that there would be a committee, they would suggest things, they would take people's requests, and then it would be approved by the town council at open meeting. That's what Cal just said.
And just, I know it's not on the, well, it isn't on the agenda because we're approving a voucher. And that's why from time to see time, you'll see on our agenda vacancies on the Reynolds Trust, which means that this is a volunteer position. I'm just kind of, you know, community people, anyone who's listening, I'm going to put it, just so that it's a group of people that meet together and decide what kinds of requests they can honor. This is an unusual one. It's usually individuals that need assistance with replacing a roof or heating system or something to help them have a better comfort life. Until they come before a committee, explain that we get a recommendation.
Cal, can I say one more thing?
Please. It's a fascinating project nobody knows about.
Not only is it fascinating, but remember when the town council did this, we actually got some good press for once, and at that time, the, you know, it was a quote, that this is a chance for people to get involved on a committee where they could actually be Santa Claus, because they listen to people's wishes, they weigh them, they weigh the ability to help people, and then they act on it, and there's money given by a gentleman years ago that's there to help people, and that's what it's for. So that's a great committee. I wish I was a, thanks to the residents, I would much be honored.
So I have to tell you one more thing because everybody says, gee, Cal, you've been doing this forever. In the mid-seventies, when this, when we got reports of the money, someone on the council said, oh, no, 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 you don't, we can't do anything with that, no. And this went on for years, and eventually in the nineties, the question came back again. If this money is accruing through interest and building, we have to do something with it. It was intended to assist the poor. Part of the money was used to buy a poor farm, you, none of you know, you're too young to know this, but there was a poor farm before unemployment and all kinds of public service programs. If people were impoverished, they could go and live if they had to. It's, and there's, anyway, there's a monument to Captain Reynolds at the beginning of Exeter Road. Would you like any? No. We should add this as a special item, not a whole, it's town, never mind.
Okay.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you. That's it.
I still remember the fourth on Dobick Standing, it was vacant.
Well, so do I, and I know, that's all right, let's move on.
Number seven, vacancies and appointments. Item A, Personnel Board Number, five members needed. Now, thank you, keep it posted. Number two, Conservation Commission, seven members needed. Number seven, B, Resignations. Thomas Keenan, Public Works Worker.
Move to accept Mr. Keenan's resignation.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Dan, related to that, if we could, I'm moving to post the position if they can.
I'll second that, Cal. All in favor?
Aye.
Item C, Appointments. Juvenile Hearing Board Members, two needed for a three-year term, beginning date of appointment, and one needed for an unexpired term ending March first, 2022. Let's keep that closely. Okay. Number two, C, number two, Board of Canvas' Alternate Member, six-year term, beginning date of appointment. Got one? Got one.
No, that's not in November.
I know, excuse me, we're in a dress, I know. It's a November communication, but it was received just after the agenda was posted, but I'm waiving this because each month, Dan says, gee, Cal, does anyone like, like, I have to reduce the person. And so it's been discussed and it's been addressed, and we do have, we do have a recommendation. Actually, it's come from the, this is all by state statute, and there needs to be alternates, I wonder if that would, yeah, and our, we have a letter from our vice chairman, the town committee, Harry Harmon. He's pleased to recommend this Mary Zick for the position of Board of Canvas' Alteration. She's lived in town for several years and was on top.
We'll have to vote on that next month.
I wouldn't if I were you, but if you, I don't understand why it's been a vacancy for a long time. If you wish to, if you wish to postpone the vote.
It was a November communication, is that okay?
Communication is not on the agenda?
Well, the vacancy is, but I don't think the board, honestly, I don't think the board is in a hurry to fill. So if you want to put it off, then we'll vote in November.
Say just pick a place on the ground.
But just for the record, someone has finally said they would accept the position.
Thanks, Cal.
You're welcome.
Number eight, Public Hearings. This is the Continued Public Hearing, Author and Entertainment License Application, Anthony Gemmels, one oh-six Penrod Road, Exeter, Rhode Island applicant, to hold drive-through holiday displays on his property as follows in memory of his mother through the Gloria Gemmels Breast Cancer Foundation. Halloween, October first through October thirtieth, 2021, ten a.m. to nine p.m. in October thirty-first, 2021, ten a.m. through twelve a.m. in Christmas, November twenty-fifth, 2021, through January second, 2022, ten a.m. to nine p.m. Traffic details will be hired for Friday and Saturday nights for the Christmas display and will be assessed and adjusted weekly as necessary. Police details will be hired for the Halloween display if necessary. Need a motion to reopen the public hearing?
So moved.
The second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you're up.
I'd like to hand out this packet, that's all right?
Congratulations on your matter.
Thank you very much.
How was your honeymoon?
Thank you, it was very good.
Good.
I wish I was here, I apologize, I wasn't here the last weekend.
Oh, you had personal business.
So I put together a packet up here with Crystal LePlante, who represents you as well. Can I, I'm here with my wife as well, as the COO of the Warrior Breast Cancer Association, Brian Soy. So the first fee, I did, there is a typo, the hours on the bottom are all around, and they work from Christmas. We are requesting two hours less per day in the morning and two hours less per day in the evening. This was the first year, we did it last year. We did the Halloween display without any issue, there was no complaints that I'm aware of. No one approached me from the town or the state police. However, last year on Thanksgiving, we did the Christmas display. At that point, we realized that we had tiger by the tail, so to speak, there was quite a bit of traffic disruption. State police approached us and asked us to approach the city to get a detail. So at one point, I was contacted by Mr. Donovan. I provided this, going back to the book with the traffic zone, we changed the traffic pattern. Mr. Corporal Mills, I think he was involved with us as well at that time, and this pattern, we hired a detail, and we did the whole pattern, and it seemed to really work. I didn't have any complaints whatsoever that I knew of until this year last year. As a matter of fact, in the packet, as we go further, I'll show you all the compliments that we received.
Will you please repeat for me the hours that you wanted?
Sure. Let me help it. So, I'm Brian LePlante, and I'm a friend of Jim's and his lawyer that helps him with businesses. And so this is something kind of near and dear to him, which you all understand. So basically, the hours that he described, they're actually ten a.m. through nine p.m. That's what's in the application, that's what was noticed in your agenda, and that's what he's seeking. And so the dates are accurate. And Anthony, I think I'd like you to tell them why you did this in the first place. I think that's really important. Why did you even start this?
So, yeah, so last year, myself and my now-wife, we talked about what we can do to kind of raise the community level, right? So we're all in the middle of COVID, people can't get out, and we formulated this idea somewhat for this somewhat of a drive-through display to facilitate, make people smile, really, that's what it was all about, make people happy, bring joy to otherwise pretty bad year. And that's why we, you know, did it. Halloween was pretty well, you know, there was no traffic disruption, it was very even, you know, amount of people coming in, there was no backup. Did it again on Christmas. We received, and I have a whole book of letters there from people, I have emails from people. And if you notice in the back of your packet there, there's, you know, we're not social media people. I did post on Next Door, there was over two hundred and fifty, all positive comments. There was not one providing to you, there was not one negative comment up until this year of this, any display, Christmas display or Halloween display. I also provide with you a couple of examples of how it affected the community. There are letters there, notes from different neighbors, and I have a whole, we have a whole book here that's four inches wide, letters and, you know, notes from people and emails. So it was very well received. So now we decided we wanted, you know, do it again.
So tell them a little bit about why you started to do something with your mom's fundraising.
Yeah, so as every nonprofit last year went through, it was very difficult to fundraise in the middle of COVID. So we, you know, formulated this idea, maybe we could take, we did Halloween, we did not accept any building code or anything. We didn't know we had something that was going to be sold. know we had something that was going to be able to succeed. People that were coming through the Halloween display were kind of throwing, you know, money to hit, please, you want to donate a donation. And that's when we realized, maybe we should do this at, you know, my mom's foundation. So Christmas rolled around, we did accept donations. And to my surprise, because, you know, I, I thought we were giving just, you know, five to $10,000, we gave just, I think it was $46,000.
One year?
And one year, one, just Christmas.
Christmas.
How long was the Christmas one?
Christmas was up for one month. So, and that, because people were just so elated about what, you know, coming through. So that was surprising, very pleasantly surprised. And it was well, very well received to help a lot of the people, trying to speak to that if you wanted to help them, whatever, help. Some of the programs that might not otherwise survive, survive. So we're, we're here at the end of this year, you know, respectfully requesting that, you know, that this be approved. But, you know, with that said, I did reach out to my neighbor and, you know, Jim and I talked at length yesterday. I don't want to offend anybody. It's not the objective. It's certainly not to inconvenience anybody. I reached out and said I'm willing to, you know, it's a very near and dear to my heart, my wife's heart. I'm willing to do whatever it takes to, you know, help him, you know, facilitate any kind of inconvenience that may cause to his property, which is, you know, it's not exactly where the closer streets are, a little bit further. I'm willing to do whatever that is. Whether that's, you know, buying blinds for light and filtering, whether it's putting up bushes, or whether it's putting up a happy Halloween sign that diffuses any light. You know, I, I, there was no accidents or anything last year. You know, I'm not, you know, he had, he asked, you know, that's an accident. I hope there's nothing. But when I turn in my yard, there are people that stop behind me. If people aren't paying attention, something could happen. But it could happen anywhere I want to, or anywhere that, that people are not paying attention. So I think it's very, it's extremely well received. And with, with that said, there's not one negative comment from last year, known in the process. So other than this, you know, and I don't want to inconvenience my neighbor, I'm willing to do whatever it takes to help him to accept it and embrace it. Because it's not, I, I, I don't want to speak too, too often, but there's not any good things happening out there, right? There's not, this kind of good thing that can be a win-win-win. I mean, how many things can be put together that are going to make so many families, kids happy, smile, and help the foundation at the same time?
That helps people that are, families dealing with cancer, which has touched us all. It's, it's, it's really amazing. And I was frankly, you know, when Anthony told me that he might need legal help, I was like, you know, why? I mean, so, he's concerned about this. He wants, he wants your approval. And I, and the other question I ask is, why are you asking for permission? You know, it's something that Attorney Mrazak can, can relate to is, and I looked at your, your ordinance and I, and basically Anthony said, because he wanted to show respect for the town. The truth is, people have displays up all over town, all over the state, Channel 12 and these others have maps of where to go. A lot of places you can park on the road. They don't allow that. You know, really inconveniencing neighbors with parking and some, and so despite the fact that I think legally, he may not even have to seek your permission, he's here and he wants to, he wants you to have some oversight and have some input. He's willing to listen. And that's essentially what, what's going on tonight. And we're happy to answer your questions.
Can I, you all want to say something? Can I just say this, having lived here a long time? I got calls and you know, the traffic eventually began to back up down to the light, heading southeast, whatever. And that's what prompted the discussion with our town sergeant.
Yes.
And then eventually that was addressed. So immediately when I saw your app, I first thought it was probably US2, because we heard, we had these calls, the traffic's blocked. I can't get home. I can't wait. And it was a good cause, but once you attempted to mediate it and fix it, it seemed like it went better. And I, I was wanting to be sure that you were going to take those steps to do that.
Yes.
Again, which I see that you want to. And have you had conversations with the sergeant?
I, I have. And I'd like him to speak too, because he was pretty much on the road at certain points and realized the effect of everything. I don't know if you're willing to say.
Well, again, the reason why Sergeant Donovan at the time got the call was because, I guess, like Cal just said, the magnitude of traffic that was just backing up because the cars were trying to come in from north and south. So they were holding up traffic because of the amount of traffic. So when Mr. Gemma approached, well, actually, I think Bill Donovan came to you first, told you what the problem was, and we rectified it. I mean, we made three lanes, one lane to have a lane for people that wanted to go in to see his display off on the right-hand side, coming in on one direction only. Anybody coming from North Kingston that was heading in a northerly direction had to turn around and come back and get in the line.
Would they turn around?
Well.
We, most of them turned around like at South Road. Some of them actually had to go all the way down to the fire station to turn around.
See, I, I drive the road enough to know that I saw that. And, and, and we just didn't want to, I don't want to compound a potential traffic hazard. And I know you don't need that. So the issue is on a country road, but how do we?
And that was one of my first phone calls of complaint when I got elected last year.
I'm sorry.
And it was, no, but it was from my sister who was rushing to CBS because her two-year-old fell and split his lip and she needed to go get, you know, whatever, not surgery, but you know, the things to close up the cut on his lip and she was stuck in traffic. And she's, what is this? What are these people doing? And I'm just like, I don't know.
Olivia, what have you done to this town?
Yes. But then I'll say, once, and we've gone through with my son and my niece, like it's, it's a great, happy thing. Everything that you have explained, like, we loved it, the kids love it. And once the, the police, you know, the, um,
Constables.
The constables, sorry. I should not say that word in this town. Once the constables got involved and had a better handle on the traffic, it was much better and.
We never had a backup.
Yeah, I never had.
We never had a backup.
Yeah. There was never any issues like that.
We made sure that the, the traffic was flowing north and south.
Yes.
I'm certainly willing to do whatever it takes. I, you know, with this said, last Halloween, there was no backup even to the street. Could happen this Halloween? Maybe. I don't know. But I'm willing to adapt, continually adapt and change to make it safe, number one, and two, to make it a family event. I mean, you want to be a family event.
Did you pay the town for the detail?
Yes, I did.
Is there any way that we can make a detour for the northerly bound people that have to turn around because they'll be turning around anywhere? I turned around on South Road and that wasn't safe. So that's what people do. They just find a place that would make, could make an accident more likely. Is there any way we could organize a detour? I know you've got some really nice signs here.
Yeah, we want to be in a dedicated turnaround.
You could northerly bound, Christmas, whatever you want to call it, follow detour signs and turn around. I don't know. It's just an idea. Because if we could organize that and you're willing to pay for it, that would help.
We did, last year, we did a further drawing for Mr. Donovan, where you would detour people down to South Road. So they'd come down South Road and then take a right and be in the right lane of traffic. So I don't know if that's, we certainly were willing to discuss that. I'm willing to do whatever.
But if you come up with a detour plan and you pay for the signs, you'd have them for each year.
Yeah. I have no problem with that.
Mr. President, if I may.
Right ahead, sir.
Mr. Gemma, have you had any progress with your, with your neighbors that had some concern? Because I think that, you know, the, the reason that we tabled this for this meeting.
Yes.
And right now, I can understand how you were here because you couldn't be here last month.
Yes.
Now we're getting into the territory that we pretty much went over last month.
Yes.
And I think, you know, I don't want to speak to the entire council. I'm in support of your project.
Yeah.
You know, I, I, I hope it's successful. I hope we're able to pull it off. It's, it's kind of almost like the South County Vaselet on a smaller scale. You know what I mean? So I'm just kind of wondering if you've had any progress? Because the reason that we tabled this last month is to give you the opportunity to meet with the neighbors and ha, and have all of these issues flushed out. So that way they could express to you what their concerns are and you could come back to them and see if we could negotiate a compromise.
Yeah.
Because I don't think they're against it, but I can't necessarily, you know, detract away from the fact that nobody wants to have headlights going, shining into their, in their house all the time. So were you able to make any progress with the neighbors?
I did speak to Mr. Andrews and, you know, him and I respectfully, you know, we didn't really, we're respectful of each other, I think. But we didn't really, we're able to reach that compromise. I don't know. Like I said, I offered a bunch of different things. I'm willing to put a happy Halloween sign which diffuses any light hitting the property. I'm willing to put a bush. I'm willing to put a fence. I'm willing to.
You didn't reject anything he wanted.
No.
Because ultimately what he wanted was not to do it. You know, that's, that's my understanding. And so.
I need to speak, he's here.
Yeah, yeah. So if there is an accommodation, then Jim will consider it.
So the answer, the answer is.
Well, one of my suggestions was, is as they pulled in, there'd be a sign there to shut your headlights off. And they, and they wouldn't turn them back on until they were actually back on the road heading.
Well, they're not starting long when they come onto 102, which is his house. So that, I don't know if that, that doesn't make any sense.
I don't know.
The streetlights were as much of the problem. It seems like just the fact that there's this traffic.
I forgive that.
Maybe you can hear from him.
Is it mostly the issue that you would add it or you want to add the October event on top of the Christmas event?
The October event was there last year.
Yeah.
It just, it, I, it just wasn't as attended as, you know, when we turned it on on Thanksgiving evening, I had no clue it was going to back up like it did. Because it didn't do that during Halloween.
Right.
So I don't, I don't know why that happened exactly, but it happened, so.
I, I think we could guess practically speaking, if I were a parent with some young children and I had a neighbor with young children, probably the first thing I'd do was send them some social media information about, you should see this thing. And so being practical and realistic, I think is likely to grow.
Yeah.
So I think that may mean that your, your efforts to accommodate may have to step up.
And that's, that's what I quit, I'm willing to hire a police detail this year for Halloween, which we didn't do last year. But I don't know, if it still is not as attended, then no problem. If it is attended, then we will try.
Can I say something else, Mr. President? So last time I asked you if most of the funds, like, common sense to me would say that if you have a month-long display for Christmas, that you're probably going to get most of the people donating to cause probably a week or two up against the holiday. And I asked if you could perhaps entertain cutting it back. I know that I spoke to, to your neighbor as well. And, and that was his concern is like, can they do it for a week? Can they do it for, and I said, well, gee, if they don't want a week, maybe 10 days, maybe two weeks, maybe we can cut it down a little bit.
Here's the challenge though. It's almost, it could be counterproductive. Because what you're doing then is you're shrinking the time period.
You're short of our time.
Higher intensity. And, and now we may have other problems. So, and they, and they shrunk the hours significantly. You know, I expected them to move maybe an hour total. They moved four hours. They cut out four hours, two in the morning, two in the, at night.
And we didn't receive funds on the holidays, as Jack said. We didn't receive funds, we didn't collect money every day just to track what days were doing well. So it wasn't even about every day. Like the weekends were more obviously, but it was throughout. It wasn't like everybody came at the end and gave money at the end. It was more even, it was even.
Jim, is there something that they can do that would satisfy you to accept, to not be upset about this?
No, not really. I mean, it's an awful busy road to begin with. And this just adds to the traffic. Just getting out on a normal day is a nightmare. Anybody that lives on this road knows that. I mean, it's not the place to do an activity like that. That's why I suggest just do it for a week, Halloween, Christmas, but, I mean, I can deal with it. Night after night for like eight, nine weeks, that's a long period of time. It's like you're a prisoner in your own house.
Now, if we, if, if they did want to cut it back to say two weeks instead of four, and that did increase the traffic, is that gonna, are you going to be satisfied even though it increased the traffic?
How about if they gave you your own police detail in your driveway so you could come and go as you please and they can park the scene, so to speak?
Well, they had one up there last.
Yeah, but especially for you.
It's a nightmare no matter what.
That's what I mean. I mean, I understand they could give the priority or pay attention to the, to that driveway. Obviously isn't, I don't know, I don't know if we need an extra one or not, you know, but it's a good idea.
Well, we were right there anyway. I had my car parked down near one of his driveways and we had one a little further up. And there was just two of us every night that we worked. And it went fine. I mean, they, you're always going to have a hiccup depending on, you know, someone's not familiar with the area, they're a little buster coming by, can I go in there? No, you got to keep going, turn around somewhere down the road. But for the most part, the, the, we never had any backup once we were there. Were there a lot of cars? Yes, there were a lot of cars.
I think the other issue that's interesting to me, you know, in talking, thinking about why he's seeking, seeking permission is, it's not like this is in a little neighborhood, you know, at a dead end on a, on a secondary street. This is on a main road. It's right next to a business zone. It's right off Route 4. You know, if he was down in one of those neighborhoods, like where my brother lives over here, it's, now that's challenging because now you're impacting people. But with all, you know, with all due respect, and I appreciate where he's coming from, everybody's protective of what they have, it is a main road. That, that's part of the, the situation in which this gentleman's living. And so I don't think I'm hearing that it's being exacerbated excessively. In fact, when it's really bad, there's traffic control. So.
Jim, is there something, I, I know Jim personally for a long time. Jim's a nice guy. He's not a grudge or anything like that, in my opinion. I think he's a good man. Just want to say that. Jim, is there something that they could do that would make you happy or is it just, you just don't want? Is it, is there something that they could do for you that might make you feel better?
I don't know.
That was the time. Is there something, an idea?
I have a vote.
That's the whole reason that we tabled it for the month. So we hoped it, we hoped that over the last month, you know, there could be an understanding that they could come to.
Well, can I speak to this then? If we have an October situation coming up, end of October. You plan to start the Christmas display in December?
Yeah, it'll be.
After Thanksgiving.
So, so my point is, we have November. If you can help to mitigate, come up with something that might, might do, make it look nice in his yard, that might deflect some light. I'm just saying, because he doesn't know what you could do. And if I were he, I'd say, thanks, nice idea, but what can you do? And if you could try and see if you can help. My other practical question is, do we have enough people at our disposal, special?
Special, the special constables?
Special agents, special constable.
The other, the other two guys, they're, they're ready, they're ready to go.
Okay. And did you have two or three last year?
Two, we had two. The night, the nights that they were there, there was just two there every night.
Okay. And if you had to, don't you have another one of the possible you could call?
It would be me. There's only, there's three of us right now because Bill Don, there used to be four of us. We're down to three right now.
I know, I realize.
Cal, Jim, is that besides you?
I can't do that, no.
I could see him out there.
Yeah. But my thought is, you know, I like, we're thinking, I think we all want you to do it. We want it to be a success, but, you know, accommodating the concern over here.
I'm certainly willing to.
Well, give it, give it a try. Try, try something.
When did you want to start your October, for your Halloween?
I mean, I'm, I'm, we're already, you know.
Yeah, we're already, we started the R H lights. They've already started. The R H lights are there, you know.
Yeah.
Can I suggest, can I suggest to the council that we move, we move ahead with this tentatively and keep it on the agenda? All right? So that way we revisit it.
Well, we need to.
And the best of meeting to see how October went and.
Yeah.
Continue with that.
And I think Olivia's idea of assigning a detail specifically to our constituent, you know, our gentleman's driveway is probably one of the best solutions along with any type of screening that possibly.
Just one guy for the driveway?
Right.
See, that's, that's the issue.
I don't know when we do that.
How many times does he come and go?
Right.
I, I don't know. I, I don't know. It's got to come out of the.
I think the best idea is.
He said he feels like a prisoner. And I don't think you want anybody, anybody to feel like a prisoner because of this. And.
I will say that the police that have been, the way they're situated, they're, one of them is directly in front of his house. So they can prioritize him as if he's a prisoner.
Yeah. And if that would be okay with him, if he was the priority, if they saw him coming or going.
That's what I need.
Yeah.
I mean, that, they would, I think they would do that anyway, but certainly I, you know, I respect, I respect him and I understand. I respect, I respect him and I understand, you know, his concerns, so I'm willing to address them. But we can be very creative to, to make it so it's seamless.
Now, there was an other neighbor as well. Was there any other communication with the other neighbor?
His tenant, Ben.
Ben, that was his first name, I don't, I don't remember his last name.
Yeah, I don't know.
So I think that the idea of just, the Jim is communicating with the constables about being aware of Jim, helping him when they're there to, to get in and out of his driveway and then coming back after Halloween so that we know how we did and we can move forward.
I think, sorry, we, we have an application for, for all those days. And perhaps we can eventually move forward and grant half, a part of your application and tell you we'll revisit the other part in November. So, I mean, that would be my suggestion if legal counsel indicates we can separate it out that way.
I will say respectfully to Mr. Andrews that I, I'm willing to, you know, to, if he communicates with me, he tells me like, this works and I didn't work, you can go on the property and whip this up there, you can't. Like if he discommunicates, I can, we can get, I can get some big, if there's a big event downtown, I can be very creative and make it work. But without communication, you just, like, you know, just, no, nothing, I can't, I can't really.
You're not, you're not going to go on his property?
No, I'm not going to.
Without permission, that's the key.
Does he have your phone number?
Yes.
Yeah, Jimmy's got my phone number too, so. I mean, I know last year when I, when I spoke to Mr. Andrews, the biggest concern was I guess people were turning around in his driveway.
Well, I just, I think he spoke, I think he spoke to.
And I think, I think we stopped, did, did we stop that, Jimmy? Did we, nobody was turning around your driveway once we were there.
I put some cones up.
You know, we did too, we put some cones over there for him too. And kudos to the highway department because they gave us buco de nero cones. So we had that whole road coned off. I mean, we made it so it looked like there was three lanes of traffic there, so.
And the special constables will keep an eye on the fact that, you know, the neighbors need to be accommodated any way they can. That would be something that you'd have to communicate to them and all collectively, I'm sure, I mean, I hope it could work. So I, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna move at the close of what we're carrying.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I could create that motion.
I could make a motion to.
Mess with it, mess with it.
To approve the outdoor entertainment license applications for Anthony Gemma, 106 Ten Row Road, ex of Rhode Island, applicant to hold drive-through holiday display on his property for the Gloria Gemma Breast Cancer Foundation for Halloween. Today's October 4th, so October 4th through October 30th.
30th.
From, from 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM and October 31st, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 AM, is it still 12:00 AM?
Halloween.
On Halloween.
So 12:00 AM only with the condition that you set up a detour with signage for the northerly bound patrons that are going to end up turning around. I think that that's probably important because you're getting bigger. And you can use, use those signs later.
Second.
Okay.
Um, excuse me, he owes $108 and one cent also.
And pretend you're paying your $108 and one cent. And that, and that's, that's the motion and then we'll talk about, we'll talk about the next one at the next meeting. I think that's what everyone here wants and hopefully there won't be any problems and Mr. Andrews will be somewhat satisfied.
December, Jim?
No, if you're continuing that portion of the talk.
Okay.
So you would act on this one and continue the second portion.
Okay.
And to continue the second, the second portion of the Christmas display at our next meeting.
Okay, so. Got your motion?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You got a second discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a great choice, we all know that.
Thank you very much, I'll do everything I can to come.
I'll ask my mom that later.
I'm sorry.
Number nine is new business extension and renewal of declaration of municipal state emergency. And our emergency management director, Stephon, said that we should extend it also. Because our governor politicians can't take up with it.
I make a motion to extend and renew, renewal of the declaration of municipal state of emergency.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, Department of Public Works awarding bid rejuvenator penetrating surface treatments of asphalt payments. And you're up. Who was your first name? Your last name? Is it Bob? Robbie Robb, please. Okay. I'm picking Jim for something. Yeah, we got the, the bids here and I believe you guys have them.
There was only one?
Yeah.
Yeah. One on the rejuvenator, yeah.
Okay. We, we do, we do have a recommendation from our, based on the bids that we received.
Someone want to make a motion? We only got one bid anyway, so.
Yeah, I, I move that we approve the bid as presented and recommended.
Second to that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, Department of Public Works awarding bid sodium chloride rock salt. I got a question.
Okay.
Uh, when you write on the state contract, what was that price per ton?
That was, it was 69.47 with a savings of $2.47.
But that's, we weren't sure how, how it would come out, so.
Yeah, it's, we go through about 700 tons per year, so it's probably just under $2,000 savings.
Okay. Someone would work better for that too, so.
Well, as you know, they had a lower price.
Yeah, it's, it's.
69.47 a ton of state?
Say again?
69.47 a ton of state?
Yes, sir.
So it's almost $3 a ton, you know.
I move to approve the bid recommendation, award, sorry, award the bid as, as recommended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, Department of Public Works request to proceed to bid for a new backup. Rob, when you see Stephen, is he, is he out of town or is he going to be around a long?
Um, he's, he is working, but he's out of town.
Yeah, okay, before, we have to word, it's normally how we normally word a bid. I just gotta make sure the language is in that bid where we deserve the right to modify except blah, 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 so. The asphalt, so, so I'll make a motion to send, proceed to go out to bid for a new backup.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
October communication number 11 letter from Marsha Sahigian concerns the garden plantation drive being used. As parking by parents in Kinstonville, Kansas.
I, I did, I did ask that this be pleased because as I read the letter, I think we all know what Plantation Drive is and we, well, know what the academy is and apparently, unlike, unlike an airport where there's a cell waiting area, apparently there is no place for folks to wait from what I read. And I just, as I read this, I wonder if there's been any communication from the school and I, I would suggest, but, I mean, my suggestion would be that we communicate with the school and ask if they're, if they can't address parking. The letter I think indicates that there are parking spaces.
Yes.
Um, as I read this, did you all remember, you have it in front of you, don't you? But doesn't it say, I haven't read it in several weeks, but when I first saw it, it was amazing. It was a good idea.
10 pockets.
Thank you, I know it says some, oh, there it is, the second paragraph. Went to school at egg three, there were at least 10 parking spaces available. Principal wasn't, told the clerk, parents are not allowed, oh, told by the clerk, parents are not allowed to park in the school lot. She told me I should call the police. And the school could not do anything about where the parents park outside of the school. I mean, obviously, my first question when I read this is, why can't parents pull by the school property? I mean, there may be a reason, maybe the police in South Kingston have told them they can't. So I think this, I would say we should address, I don't know the.
We probably do not want them to impede the school buses. But there's going to be some kind of way they can pull in the lot and not let the parents out until the school buses are gone. I don't know, something without them.
There is no parking on Stoney Ford that section, the Giants ditch on.
No, I, well, then I, I realize, I'm familiar with the roads, so I know why the parents can't park on the road because there is no parking. So this, this young lady, a resident of Plantation Drive, indicates that people are parking.
Is there any ordinance in town that says no parking on this?
I think the only road is Yagoo on the hill.
Yeah.
It's the only one it's posted that I know of, right?
I, I wonder if we could do two things, but well, first, let me make a motion if there's a second about Jim to apply and if he thinks that would be appropriate. But then I'm going to make another suggestion too. So I move that we, we, that we send a letter to the school indicating we've had a complaint from local residents about parking on, on, on town, you know, town streets and obstructing traffic there. Could they please review their parking rules, rank protocols, regulation?
I'll second that motion.
Uh, Jim, comment?
No, I think that's appropriate, I mean, it's, we, in the meantime, we, if, if they, if they refuse to, to assist you, then, then we'll take a look at what our options are.
Sure.
But then that seems like a perfectly reasonable.
Could we, and that include, include in that copy, could they dismiss Shanigian? Okay, could we do that, please?
It might help, it is a public, it is a public street too, so technically.
May I ask?
Then I, then I was going to ask, or maybe you, I was going to ask, go, if some afternoon somebody's down there and that school gets out, could you kind of assess that sometime?
Well, that, that road actually isn't, that section right there where that school is, it isn't even Exeter.
Yeah, no, 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 but please, but please listen. Plantation Drive is an exit.
Yes.
So this is where the late, I mean, you probably didn't see this copy.
No, I didn't.
All right, so let's not be scope and can I ask if scope, if you could, sometime, and you could, if school, that time of day, if you're ever out down the center town in the next, you know, week or so, could you just drive over there and see what it looks like? Plantation Drive, we'll get you a copy.
My question was going to be, I know DPW probably puts the signs up, like the no parking around Yagoo and like at the top of Chestnut Hill, you can't park on the other side of the hill.
But that's.
Okay, I was going to say, but who determines like around Yagoo that you can't? Like why were those no parking signs put up because of?
That was done years ago because of that skew.
Complaints, yeah, I know that.
Due to snowstorms and people were parked all up and down the hill.
So from complaints, then the town council told DPW to put out no parking stuff, so.
So you're saying if this doesn't go anywhere with Jim, that maybe we should consider putting up some signage there?
Yes. I don't know.
Yeah, and I think that's something we could look at, but, but I would, the only reason I hesitate is when other people have guests, family, friends and want to park on the street. If we, if we would start posting no parking, that maybe, that isn't.
That's not the first option.
No, no, it isn't the first.
Big hen ways, shape or form, but.
Well, the first option is.
Yes, that's a letter.
And 10 parking spaces, obviously, isn't that much space. But let's at least alert the school.
Well, how many pickup?
We all know. We don't know, but let's do that if we could. That was the motion, I think it's right, ready for the bill.
Any other discussions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Sometime grab a copy, thanks.
Ken gave me one.
Item F, discussion, consideration, possible action, Rhode Island General Law 44-5-87, property tax credit in exchange for volunteer services performed by persons over age 60. Maria, is that you?
Yeah.
Frank. Frank put it on.
Maria, do you want to shed some of your concerns, as Carrie put it in the couple letter?
Well, I mean, I share.
Including but not limited to administration liabilities, occasionally managing and general oversight.
Yes, those were definitely my concerns, we, we spoke at length. Obviously, my concerns are more financially eroding the tax base. As much as I would love to, without additional revenue from somewhere else, it'd be difficult to.
Did you look at that local audience from Newport?
I did, well, I mean, Newport is still completely different than, than us, I don't really think we can compare.
Right.
And Frank, you probably have tons of conversation, but I, I mean, I followed up with Lynn, I was talking to Carrie just today. It's, it sounds good, but implicating, implementation, real pretty problematic.
I know, that's what I said last month.
I know.
You know, I mean, they, they go and they draft this legislation and.
Not good.
It's a great idea, but who's going to pay for it?
It's a minimum wage, it's a minimum, it's minimum wage equivalent, so I mean, these older people could get a job paying that or more at a local establishment as well.
Right.
It's, it would be the same, it would be equivalent to that, as far as I can tell.
I, I look, I didn't see that, that wage requirement, but it's in there and I just missed it.
It's in there.
It's something, it is, because I know people, I think Lynn spoke to me about that, which fascinates me. Frank, to your point, you need to go back and tell them not to do this stuff.
I need to.
I know, I said someone needs to tell them. But, but the point is, if in fact you're going to pay somebody minimum wage, then give them a tax credit and somebody has to decide, well, how many hours is that? I, I mean, the administration of this.
They're going to oversee the work to make sure they do it properly, that's tacky.
Someone, someone suggested in Newport, at City Hall, like Newport, you could have someone posted at the entrance to direct people, information, well, I don't know how to get to, Carrie said, that's what happens here all the time. People walk in and say, is Route 3 that way? Well, I suppose we could have someone sit out here all day so that two or three people might come in and say, where's Route 3? Which I'm being facetious, you, you get that, right? So Frank, tell them, tell your friends not to do this stuff.
I think that went your side of the front.
Oh, really? I was hoping, I was hoping, I was afraid I would serve. Okay, I asked for that.
The reason I put it on the agenda is they made, as a professional courtesy for the constituents, several constituents that brought it up. But I had a feeling this is where it was going to wind up. But that's fine.
Carrie did, Carrie did.
Didn't you want to weave it on the agenda or?
Not particularly, no.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion, Frank.
Yeah, Frank has to, he put it on, he's going to take that off.
Come on, Frank. Another one of that state mandates that you've thrown in our ass.
Unfunded mandate.
Unfunded mandate, so.
I mean, a motion that we remove it off the agenda due to research, I don't think that it's financially feasible for the towns to explore this option at this moment.
Second, second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next one's easy. Discussion, consideration, possible action, purpose of transcript of council special media September 22nd, 2021. It was like $671 would figure.
Thanks, Maria. Didn't mean to put it on the spot.
Do we need it, is what they're going to only get?
Well, this is.
Generally, it's left to a part, you don't know if there's been any appeal of it. If there's an appeal, then generally a person taking appeal will get a copy and then the town, if we made a party to an action, we would want them. But right now, I believe the town's paid the, the sin of.
We paid for the sin of.
That's all you're obliged to do. If we want one in the future, you can always buy one, but right now, it seems to me like you, you don't need it unless someone is taking an appeal of an action.
And they'll have it there if we want to buy it later.
He will always have it.
Like small ways in perpetuity?
Well, I don't know.
Like full wage for like five years, okay?
Until, until a special occasion. See, I, I don't know what his particular suggestion would be, Frank, that they've got tapes and it's not, he doesn't generate a, a written document. He leaves it in the tape form. He leaves it in the tape form until.
Someone requests it.
Until someone requests it, so.
You wanna make, no, we should save the tape. I mean, I, for one, would be fascinated to have it, I, I'm not gonna vote.
What, you don't vote for it?
I'm not gonna vote for it, but I'm fascinated because of some of the comments that Peter Gaiman made, for which it's a stenographic record. No, I don't need it, but they fascinate me, as having sat here for a long time. That was an unusual public hearing, we know that, the whole process was unusual. But, anyway, that's enough, we don't have to go that way. As long as we know, they're gonna be held.
Okay, so we don't need to leave a comment on that?
So, she's making a motion that we move that, or?
Go right ahead, so.
I make your motion to remove seven G, discussion, consideration, and possible action, purchase of transcript of council special meeting September twenty-two, twenty twenty-one.
One second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number ten, unfinished business. Status, transfer station purchase.
Uh, that's, I can discuss that in executive session.
Okay. Item B, discussion, charter changes, financial talent meetings?
Yep, I, I'll move that to the agenda right along the work session on eighteen.
Special, special meeting, okay.
The way there's no, but clarification. Yeah, yeah, it is, but then it might not be, I believe, there might be another reason. Oh, but for now, it's a work session. But there might be change, correct, Dan, is that what I?
We're gonna do a special meeting on the eighteen.
Special meeting.
Yeah, 'cause that way we can vote.
Well, no, I understand, please understand, my clarification was, it says work sessions, but now I understand what I just, and we should.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I just wanna make sure the pass making and all, but it is, it will. That's all, thank you.
Uh, item C, split rock mobile park, electrical issues.
It's also on executive session.
Item D, public meetings, live streaming and video conferencing. That was Lynn, and, uh, we still have, okay, you were doing that too, weren't you?
Well, we already want the system for the, uh, the live library.
Is it installed?
We gotta wait till it comes in, we have the television, but we don't have the system yet, that would be back order, so.
It's turned up. So, leave that under till next one.
Okay. It's, what they've done is, is big, and being a programmer, I know that, we can't, what did they say?
Like, the whole camera system and the whole thing? Yeah. Yeah.
But, anyway.
Who said we wouldn't need that big?
Okay, so, we'll just leave it there until we find out more.
Yeah.
Item E, status, Department of Environmental Management notice of violations, Town Garage one seventy-five, South County Trail.
It's also listed under executive session.
Okay. Item F, Exeter Rural Land Preservation Trust, proposed donation of money swamp pond parcel, zero victory highway by the nature conservancy, that we will be addressing at Oc, special meeting, October eighteen.
So, what's the difference, you're gonna mask what the difference is, so I know I was?
Uh, we can vote, if it's a work session, we can vote.
Okay.
So, that, that's the only difference, so. That'll be some things we can clean up off this agenda that won't be here next month.
Perfect, thank you.
So, that will be addressed at the October eighteen session.
But I, I would, I would, I would move, I would move that we remove this from unfinished business, you know?
Okay.
Since it's gonna be addressed, special meeting, second, to, whatever.
Okay. Any other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Report of offices, boards, and committees, town council assistant report.
I just wanna make note, and Steve's reporting, Paul and Heidi, they did some work on the Sessopon program, and they will be doing the work on the new box with the entrance way, just so you know, Diane Allen fell after the last board meeting, I mean, because it was dark, and they were going up to the, to the door, it was very high, she's okay.
She's shoveling from what I said.
But they're gonna address those issues. Other than that, for the, for the special meeting, we had discussed the Kingston Road issue, and that was gonna be put on a work session, so that would be appropriate for the eighteen. We approved it, so, we told them they could do that, no?
Kingston Road was left as where it was gonna be, it was gonna stay under capital improvements.
Right, but there was gonna be a, a work, I had listed the work session here. Did we do that?
We did that.
Yeah, we did that, Kingston Road was settled at that last, my special town meeting, so, we don't need to hear that anymore.
So, you don't wanna have a work session? Because it was part of discussion last meeting, to go to work session, see what was needed, beyond, I guess, what was approved.
We did it at the work session. I mean, at the special.
Maybe during budget. Okay, do that, especially.
Do that for old people.
And then, um, and then the other one, we're not gonna, you know, we, we have a, a big agenda, we're working on the non-employee benefits policy, and that'll have to be ready for, um, for the budget plan before that, so I'm worried for Maria.
Oh, shit.
I can't see, that doesn't work. So, um, we won't put that on the agenda, but we'll put the charter on there, so.
That it?
Yeah.
Okay. Solicitors' report, well.
There, there are a number of items that I can address, but you have the date on, in executive session, I'll list them for you. Each one, uh, under current future litigation, the redevelopment Town of Exeter, six cases, I can report on all of those. The number three, Davis versus Town of Exeter, twenty twenty dash twenty-two-six, bring up the date on that one. Under potential litigation, number one, dog complaints, some of them on the road, and number two, status department, environmental management notice violations, those two, I'll bring you up the date on. E, investigative matters, dog complaints, number one, number two, status department, environmental management, to repeat. Split rock violations and potential zoning violations, farmland grows, but to the extent that, that those matters need to be addressed, I can bring you up the date on those, and also, under the transfer station purchase. Number F, weather app.
All right, reports removed from the set agenda. Uh, Olivia, you, I think you had something to the treasure?
Yes, I did, and my question, I spoke to Maria about the second item down, the grant, the social services, and the farms that are here, and one of the farms is owned by a member of the planning board, which have been paid by the town, and I don't know if this happened before or after she was on the planning board, but in your legal opinion, like, in the code of ethics in Rhode Island, should the town be paying a member of the planning board for items?
Olivia, this is, I'm getting hit with this just now, it's something, if you want me to take a look at it, we're happy to do that.
Okay.
I can't really, I'm fine on that. The other thing is, just so you know, under ethics violations, those type of complaints, if it were to be a complaint, it's not really something.
Yeah, I'm not.
But I will, I'll be happy to look at that.
Yes, like, I know people, like, it's on my radar because I'm newly elected, I've attended two or three ethics commission, um,
workshops.
Workshops, and that was one of, if you're elected, appointed, whatever, you can't receive, you can't work, you can't do anything else for the town, correct?
Unless you're already doing it.
There, there's, I have to look at, let me, let me look at it before, so I know the facts, before I give any kind of an opinion like that, I really wanna know.
Once a year, I'll be on here, because we'll sit here and do all baskets at Christmas time. The rest of the year, I do them for free, because it's no big expense, but when I do those Christmas ones for women and the girls, that really takes us over a day, two of us.
Okay.
But I will refuse myself, I'm voting on that.
Yeah, but that doesn't even matter.
Well, I think, I guess that's the question she's asking, if you would look at it.
I absolutely will look at it, the, the thing, my disclaimer always is, that when an issue like this comes up, I always tell the person who's involved to ask the, for, for an ethics advisory, which is really.
Like, I don't wanna get people in trouble, but I don't, like, are these, if they're paying, why aren't these going out for bid, why aren't?
Let me look, let me look it over for you.
Like, so everybody gets a, a shot at it?
Can, can, yeah, maybe.
Or, and like Sanders said, are the decorations going out for a bid, or are they just, like, I?
The girls love my baskets, you know, so, and I gotta, I gotta ask Maria, how much I charge you the year?
The girls love their basket, is that a legal thing?
And, and, yeah, Gina's got her hand up, we need that.
I don't know if it makes a difference, just for giving you more information, um, that particular line item was money that was used to pay for food that was given out at, kind of the quasi-farmers market, I guess you could call it, that social services setup that was run twice a month for July, August, and September. It was paid for through a grant that social services applied for from the Department of Healthy Aging, I believe. And then, she received the grant, and then the town issued the check from that grant, so I don't know if that makes a difference in your research. I obviously would like to know the answer to this too, because this is the first I'm hearing of it being an issue. It was grant money that was paid out to cover the food for those giveaways for needy people in town.
So, you just have to take the money and administer it?
That's through Jessica, she's the one that reached out to.
Wasn't it a DEM grant?
It was the Department of Health and Human Services grant, I think.
Did you say that they, like, you donated the food?
We didn't donate the food, basically, what the grant did was it provided funding to cover the food, and it was divvied up between the three farms that participated, which were Our Kids Farm, mine, um, Pauline Farm, and Emma Acres. And we provided the food on those days that was then given to the public.
Okay.
So, the grant just covered the cost of it, that's all it did.
And she is Our Kids Farm.
No, no, but now.
Right, and I'm on the planning board, so that's where the question is of, because it was paid to my farm, and I'm on the planning board, is that a conflict?
Excuse me.
Well, anyway, well, Jim, maybe, maybe Olivia can appreciate. Well, but now I, I just have a question now, when you just, I'm, I'm listening.
Can I, can I, can I reiterate, just for a second, please, because, I mean, it's, it seems like this is aimed at me as though I'm supposed to be the archer of this, and I'm not. That's my point, and I always tell people that what the solicitor's opinion on this type of matter is worth to pay for this written on, according to our Supreme Court, the solicitor does not issue ethics advisories on these things. Now, I'll be happy to take a look at it, as I always am, and to give my thoughts on it, but that's really all they would be.
Okay.
So, I need to know all of the facts in order to even do that, but the point is, I'm not gonna be rendering to you an opinion, solicitor's opinion on this, it's, okay, but I'll be.
Like, if I call the ethics commission and ask them this question, and they deem that it's, like, very innocently, I, if I call and ask, it's gonna start a thing, correct?
Well, I don't know what.
Like, my father, my father, and I, I am maybe sensitive about this, because he provided a free service to the town, like, um, giving them engineering advice once. Another member of the council, when he was on the council, said, oh, no, complained to the ethics commission, and he got fined seven hundred dollars for giving them opinions, giving the town free opinions in her, in his field of expertise, so.
Be happy to talk to you, if you want to call me, and we'll go through the facts.
Like, and I don't want people getting fined, but I also don't want the town doing the wrong thing.
Agreed.
Okay, uh, next up is number eight, I think you had that one down, did you have some reads?
What, which one is it?
Exeter Public Library?
That's me, just, I wanted to say a few things, and some of the details, Ken, not really. Uh, but, ladies and friends, the friends, um, of the library, uh, well, festival. The point I wanna make is that the library staff, the board of trustees, the librarian himself, were there and were actively present and part of it, and those who have been involved in this for a long time were really, really pleased to see that cooperative spirit, and a significant amount of money raised by the friends. Uh, and, and they were, they were all working in harmony, which, Ken, I think, and you were there, you, you would agree.
Yeah, I was there, I was on very long. I think they were also close to, like, five thousand.
I, I just also wanted to mention, I, excuse me, that there's been a youth services, uh, direct director, I have an assistant director of the library, who's in charge of youth services, that's sort of a position. And so, that person, from what I understand, from the librarian, is kicking off already, jumped into gear, and, and I, I mean, I can't remember if I mentioned that, I think it was about to happen last month, but I just want you to know, uh, that's happened. And also, just an FYI, at the library, and the librarian is very happy to accommodate and anxious to speak, there's a seniors' meet and greet that's gonna happen on October thirteenth, a Wednesday, uh, from noon to three. It's, doesn't, doesn't impact any of the rest of you sitting here, obviously, but your people, public should know, because there's been questions asked about why I should put something down for seniors, they used to be years ago. Program room's gonna be, it was just a kickoff, maybe it'll be three people, maybe it'll be twenty-three. Pat would come, but she'd be busy, because she's working, sorry about that, I know you're not a senior.
Oh, right.
And, and finally, it was discussion, and Ken, I didn't know, got back to you, there was a, a resident who's, has been very vocal about issues at the library, and then has asked for a donation of equipment that she made to be returned, and I was gonna follow up, Ken, do you know whether any of that happened?
Well, the director called me and told me, you know, using Kwang, he's some of the person that wrote, one of the writers, uh, What's Your Drive? What was her name?
Nancy Brode.
Nikki Brode.
Well, it's been public, it's part of public communication.
I think Jessica, at the beginning of COVID, around that time, she donated, um, funds to purchase a screen and a projector for the outdoor, shoot, blow, thing, whatever, and, um, it was never used, but she came back in within the last month, and was in probably about a year now, and asked for it back, so, you know, talking with the director, I said, well, you can do two things, you can keep it, say no, and keep it, or, you know, get back to it, and knowing that this person has caused some problems on, uh, social media, and said some things, and also, when letters were coming in, um, she was one that had a picture on it with the dogs, um, I said, yeah, was it, was it work that, and so he just, um, he returned it.
Oh, did he return?
She wanted to, um, she gave a check to buy that specific equipment, so he just gave her the equipment back. It was never used, um, but now, um, he has updated the policy, there's a donation policy now, a form, that when you donate something, you, you don't return.
You don't come back, because you, you didn't like, somebody can get appointed to the board, or something like that.
Right, it just wasn't worth the hassle, you know, trying to fight that one.
Understand.
Especially things are going so well down there.
Right, but he did come up with some policy, so for the people.
We, we, yeah, so, whenever somebody donates something, it comes to profit.
Well, I'm glad that got resolved internally, because Ken, as, as Lisa had spoken to Ken about that, he, he told me that story, and it, it didn't sound good to me.
No, I just like to record that once, was slowing down, not hitting anything, but that was like the last incident, probably, before the sentence.
I, I also, I also, Jessica's report, and only because, as I was reading it, there's several fascinating issues. This, this, this new social services director, we'll get, we'll get to meet her, she, she's just really very anxious to help in so many ways, and here's one thing that she speaks about, have several programs underway, this happened to be for seniors. The public libraries have a six-part series of intergenerational programming for seniors, and she says, I plan to support this program with funding from a grant. And she says, I plan to support this program with funding from a grant from the Office of Healthy Aging that she received last year. Uh, she also speaks of a senior yard cleanup that's scheduled for October tenth. Uh, and it says, this will allow several clients I work with that have health issues to receive some help with floor cleanup. And, and she goes on to, a grant that she's applied for to bring health and wellness, and she gives some details of that. And, um, she also speaks about a Christmas program, uh, at the Grange, helping seniors. She's very, I'm not speaking about it because I am a senior, and I'm not saying that. No, I'm not, I'm just thinking that you should know that she's out and about trying to, to do a lot of good things. And, and keep in mind, some people say, oh, we should have a food bank in town. I hope everyone knows there is one, and it operates out of the Exeter Chapel, and it has for some time, and she helps with that.
And we should also thank the people who probably regularly donate to the department that she works in, in town. Very nice around to give out their own finances or gifts or other as well.
Cal, you had number fourteen?
Yes, very quickly, I haven't spoken much about the Job Corps because it's, it's really, they haven't been in these community meetings. They haven't, they've been zoomed and, and not very good. But you should know that the Job Corps Advanced Culinary Arts Program people donated boxes of pastry. I know there was biscotti and all kinds of cookies, and they donated them to the Friends of the Library to be sold to assist with the, with the program. So it's a bit of, I mean, the, the festival, so there's a interaction there. I don't know, I don't know who orchestrated it, but there were boxes, and all day long over there, they sold, um, cookies and biscotti and items like that that came from Job Corps. So the kids were, were in their craft, then they donated boxes to help community, a community project.
Nine big boxes.
Nine big boxes. They were very big, and somebody said to me, did you buy any of those cookies? And, no, they're so good, anyway, that's another story. But I just think Job Corps ought to be, there's been a lot of, you know, there's always a lot of negativity, but that's something to do. And finally, the school district, I haven't spoken too much about that either, but I thought, given that the schools kicked off, I wanted you to know that I did get a report in my request. There's a couple of interesting things we should know, and none of us has children up there. But one of the, one of the items is that the bus company has come up with a seating plan of some kind that distances the student, now Pat's shaking her head because I think you've got still grandchildren. Have you heard of this? Now.
Does this mean they have more buses?
I don't, I don't know if they've done, uh, but, but this, this was all in court, in conjunction, I guess, with the Department of Health. But the, okay, so I don't know if that's working. I haven't, I, I've reached out to the superintendent, but he's way too busy to chat with. But how about this, new Department of Health recommendations, which they're following, with students sent home. Now, I read this, and I'm fascinated. They used to be sent home if they had one symptom of a, of a hole list or associated with COVID. But the new Department of Health regs indicate that they don't have to do that unless the student demonstrates true symptoms. Just thought you should know. I mean, they're working on this, they're working on this stuff, it can't be easy. And then you should know that, or parents have been told, that they've hired an additional full-time nurse to help with voluntary surveillance testing as an additional means of monitoring cases in our district. She will begin her work and so forth this month, and so. The other, the other question that I asked, uh, I'm Robin Serio, the secretary, I said, yeah, I tried to talk to Jim, but she, he's just so busy with COVID, I can imagine. But I asked about the five-year, uh, average student issue, you know, that they're thinking about a charter change, and they had the meeting, and I, I saw an agenda that they were supposed to have met last week. So I asked her, and she said, from the report that she heard, was that there's been no action taken yet. But that's the issue, remember we talked about leveling off the impact of population change? So it's, something's happening, but no, nothing yet, I just wanted you to know.
So I sit on that.
You do that one?
Yeah.
That one, the charter change, you're on the bill.
Both, yeah, I was asked.
Oh, good, did you, did you go, we, well, we, we always, we know how enthusiastic you are about that. Did you, did you go, or weren't you able to?
Well, I'm always there, yeah, I haven't missed a call.
So, oh, what happened?
Well, we're in the middle of.
Brainstorming.
Brainstorming, and there was a three-year, uh, there was, so, so Jim, superintendent, is really good at spreadsheets, and he has all the information, so he has these Excel sheets, and he shows us the difference between the actual year-to-year, a three-year comparison, if you did a three-year rolling average, and those numbers, if you did a five-year rolling average, and those numbers, and then a seven. So we've eliminated the three right off the bat, isn't this new enough?
Yeah.
My personal feeling is a seven is too much. I would say the five seems most reasonable, and we need to, we're gonna meet a few more times, and hopefully, hopefully end it by December. But there's some new questions that could make it go a little longer.
Good, glad, okay. Well, because we, we talked about it as a council, that, I mean, that, that came up, a budget.
And how would the years, what years do you start at, like, five years past? Or is it looking forward in the future?
So that's the math, when you started? Yeah, I'm not sure, I could guess, but I don't.
Okay, yeah, don't.
That's probably, it's under.
Implementation is key.
Yeah.
So it's fair.
Okay, well.
Thank you.
I'd that's all for me, thank you.
Next is communications, Frank, you had number eight.
Yeah, I was just curious if you knew if anybody signed up for this grant class?
I'm not.
I did. I did, no.
You know if anybody did that?
No.
No, okay.
Okay. Mike, number ten, Hampshire Power, I was reading that one.
Yeah, so I, I, only reason why I, I called that one is because I read it, and I don't really understand it. So I wanna make sure that I'm missing something, and I know it says copy to Maria on it. Uh, is that anything that we need to, to act on, or?
Right now, we're under contract with Constellation. Um, Constellation is a provider that we minimized and reduced our, um, you know, per kilowatt hour cents. So I, we have one more year for that, so I think we should just wait a little bit longer, and then we can look at our options.
Okay, thank you.
And number eleven, we already addressed that one, I think you had that, Cal, you, you might do. What's other administrative issues, I skipped over that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you know, I just have one question, and I can't remember, see if you remember. Uh, we had this in front of us last month, and it was about DEM grants to help communities protect, uh, and it was a fifty percent matching. We know we don't have funds, but did we, did we move this just to the land trust to see if?
Yeah, yeah.
Did we do that? Because I, I found, I think we did, but I couldn't.
You said you did that.
I, I think I probably did, and then this, this came across the desk today, and I thought, did we do something with this? I know, I don't think it's anything anybody could act on, but I still think we should, that's all. And we did, okay, that's enough.
Okay, now that's a nice notion. That props everything else, it's time for executive session, we'll take a five-minute break.
Yes, I was just gonna ask you.
Okay, yeah, we're gonna take a five-minute recess.
The motion and that?
Can you sign, can you sign?
Yeah.
It looks like I'll be coming for cones again.
Yes, we'll get them rid of it. In fact, already, very. Are they really dead? Same spot. Oh, yeah, yeah, I happen to be driving by.
What's hurting, my legs hurt? My knees hurt? Well, listen to me. Frank, stretch it out, Frank.